Downtown Council for May 3, 2021 to session. One of the great things about being back in person.
Mayor.
One of the great things about being back in person. We have the return of our scouts to lead the pledge of allegiance. So Kirk Losi, if you'll come forward from Parker.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, sir, and thanks for being the first one back here in almost 14 months. Appreciate that. All right, our next item of business is a special presentation on the Municipal Clerks Week, May 2 through the 8. I gotta get my stuff together here really quick. So to do this presentation, I am going to come off the dais because it's a very special presentation and it's a very special night for us here in Parker. And for this special night, I've asked two of my good friends and former mayors, Mayor Castiano and Mayor Lopez, who is off in the Western Slope campaigning tonight, to join us because we want to talk about an award that was presented to our town clerk, Carol Baumgartner. Tonight is Carol's last meeting after 40 years in Parker, and I think even more volunteering than that. So Carol, it will be a very weird moment to not see you sitting there every week, but if you want to come back every week, the chair's open. Well, happy, well happy. So Mayor Castiano, if you want to come join me. So we're going to, for the first part of it, and if you can see on the screen, if we can promote Mayor Lopez.
Mayor Lopez, please unmute yourself.
Mayor.
Mayor, can you see me? So Greg, we're in the middle of a gubernatorial campaign speech. So all the people you see behind him are.
Mayor, can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I'm in a meeting with about 80 people from Grand Junction, so I'm going to step out of the way so that you can see all the people that I brought to Town Council meeting to give Carolyn, Carol Baumgartner, a great retirement welcoming. So.
That's great. Mayor Lopez, we almost have as big of a crowd here in Parker. So we're going to read, and I've asked because it's pretty lengthy, and you know mayors like to speak the whole time, but I thought I would parse it off over three of us. So we're going to read the letter, the nomination letter that was sent on your behalf, Carol, and I think it speaks volumes to viewers. So Mayor Lopez, I'll let you start out with.
Let me just tell you, Carol, I can't see you, but just know that I'm with you. You know, Carol, I'll never forget the first time that I walked into my office as the third mayor of Parker, and you were so gracious to welcome me in. I don't know if you remember this or not, Carol, but when I walked into my office, the only thing that was there was the furniture. There was no pencil, there was no paper, there was no stapler. I remember I called you and I said, can you tell me where the supply closet is? And you said, Mayor, why? What do you need? I said, how about a pencil, some paper, you know, just the basic things. But Carol, I will tell you, for the four years, and you remember this, I was 27 at the time, you took me under your wing, you guided me through, walking through everything that I needed to learn. And this is one thing I'll never forget. I remember coming to you and I asked, Carol, is our staff always sick? And you say, why do you ask that, Mayor? I said, because everybody keeps coming to me and saying, I gotta go see Dr. Cog. I gotta go visit Dr. Cog. And you said, Mayor, it stands for the Denver Regional Councils of Government. And I said, well, thank you for clarifying that. You know, Carol, the town of Parker would not be the community that it is today if it wasn't for your dedication, if it wasn't for your love of our community, and if it wasn't for you always helping all those new elected individuals that the community brought forth before you. Because I know they all relied on you every single day. Because when they needed to know the history and when they needed to know what they should be doing, you always gave them a listening ear. You always gave them the time and appreciation for the fact that you were asking them. So Carol, I wish you the best in your new journey. I'm so glad you're turning the chapter, but know this, Parker will never forget you. May God bless you and your family. Gotta go, Mayor. We'll talk to you guys again.
Thanks for joining, Greg. All right, we're going to then read the nomination letter. The town of Parker proudly nominates our town clerk, Carol Baumgartner, CMCA, under the category of outstanding contribution to a municipality by a clerk or deputy clerk. Carol, who we affectionately refer to as employee number one, has been the one dependable constant for one of the fastest growing municipalities in Colorado, starting with the initial organization of Parker in 1981 as a statutory town and culminating with the incorporation of Parker as a home roof municipality in 1984. Carol was a part of a movement that began in the late 1970s to incorporate a couple hundred residents, which today is approaching 58,000 residents in the town. As employee number one, Carol started in a modular building on Main Street, the Baskin Robbins is now located on that site, and handled, along with Parker's first mayor, all the administrative needs of this fledgling municipality. During this period of time, town council meetings were held on the second floor of the Quonset Hut, a structure that was erected decades earlier as a part of a community barn raising by the Parker area ranching and farming community, which had a marginal heat and no air conditioning. For her first year as employee number one, Carol served as a volunteer. Later, as a paid employee, Carol, along with all the other administrative duties, served as a project manager and oversaw the assembly of modular structures for what became the first town hall of Parker. The final move to permanent town hall for Parker came in 2002. Today, Parker has 297 full-time employees and 525 part-time employees. Through Parker's rapid growth, Carol transitioned from handling Parker's administrative needs to focusing exclusively on the duties of a town clerk and mentoring her staff in the town clerk's office, including, but not limited to, town council meetings and packet preparation, special licensing authority meetings and packet preparation, records management, records retention, recordation of town hall, land use, and other instruments affecting real property, open records requests, I've done that a couple times with you, the Parker Municipal Code, codification, the Parker Code updated quarterly, elections, candidates including orientations, issues, initiatives, recalls, permitting community events, special events, peddlers and solicitors. Carol's dedication and love for Parker is unmatched. Carol continues to be the safety net for all town departments, ranging from agenda items presented to Town Council for consideration to the proper recordation of matters affecting title to real property. Carol has been instrumental in ensuring that Town Council's work product, which is contained in the Town Council meeting packet, is perfect meeting after meeting. I can attest to that, too. The most recent significant accomplishment of Town Clerk's office includes conversion of all meeting packets, Town Council, Planning Commission, Special Licensing Authority, from a paper format to an entirely electronic format, which I always gave you a hard time about that. Conversion was organized, this conversion was organization-wide and required from all aspects of agenda preparation be in electronic format. The town clerk's transition to electronic packets under Carol's leadership was so successful that she even inspired or shamed the town attorney's office to follow in her footsteps. I know Jim and I, we sit in his office, I can't stand this. You've got to do it, Dave, you've got to do it, okay. The town clerk's office also handled a politically contentious citizens initiative to rezone town-owned property that was slated for development to an open space zoning classification. Because of Carol's exemplary reputation in the community, there was no challenge to the clerk's determination that the initiative petitions were deficient due to a number of signatures that were disqualified by the town. Carol's positive influence on the establishment and nurturing of Parker, first as employee number one, and later as the town clerk overseeing and mentoring the town clerk's office over the past decade, which is now ticking towards 40, are the reasons why Parker requests that Colorado Municipal Clerks Association recognize Carol's outstanding contributions to the town. And the plaque reads, "CMCA Outstanding Contribution to a Municipality by a Clerk Presented to Carol Baumgartner, Town of Parker. For meeting and exceeding the standards of your role as a municipal clerk, we commend you on your performance both as a leader and a mentor. Your continued dedication to your department and your community upholds the purpose of CMCA to promote a better understanding of the functions and responsibilities of the Municipal Clerk's Office. Thank you for always reaching above and beyond." And I think that says it for the whole town of Parker. Thank you for always reaching above and beyond for all of us. We appreciate it. (Applause).
We thank you. We thank you.
I know.
If you ever write a book, if you ever write a book, we are in trouble. Serious trouble.
That's true.
All right, so Carol's going to hang up with us for this. So, all right. Mayor Castiano, you want to serve the first one?
Sure. This is a proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week, May 2 through the 8 of 2021. Before I get into that, I do wish to thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council that allowed me to do this this evening, members of the staff, oh, some of you are new, and I know that, and of course, to you wonderful Parker citizens for being here tonight, supporting the grand lady and the grand work that she's done for a grand town. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Shall I continue? No, sir. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the municipal clerk.
Now, therefore, I, Jeff Tobor, Mayor of Parker, Colorado, do recognize that the week of May 2 through May 8, 2021, has Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our appreciation to our municipal clerks, Carol Baumgartner, Chris Vanderfull, Mandy Denny, and Jennifer Mallory, and to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform with their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated this 3rd day of May, 2021. And if you all will come back here.
I couldn't do it without them.
Well, you could, but it'd take longer.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. All right, council, we still have work to do tonight. So with that, we will move on to item number three, and that will be an in-person update from the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Cara Massa, welcome back.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me tonight. Gosh, this is great, being here in person and everything. Well, the first thing I want to do also is just congratulate Carol on retiring. I think that's just a great feat for any of us who have worked so hard and long. So we just have a little goodie bag of Parker things to give to you, just so you don't forget all the stuff. She's not leaving.
That won't be possible.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you so much for all the time you've given to all of us. We really appreciate that. Exciting news going on at the Chamber of Commerce. One thing I want to do first off is thank my volunteer, Cam. I think everyone knows Cam, she's been around forever. She has come to the chamber and become my savior. She is doing so much to help me get our events going, just helping out with all the members. We're open now, so I just want to give a public thank you and recognition to Cam. So if you're listening out there, you're amazing. Also, we're having our golf tournament, a big event for us. It's an inaugural event, May 24th, out of Black Bear Golf Club, so anybody likes to golf, come out and join us. We're also gearing up for wine walks. Again, many thanks to all of the people here at the town for helping me get those going, a lot of paperwork, things I'm not used to doing, but we are up and running for June, July, August, and September, the last Friday of each month, so come see us, come have some fun, volunteer if you want. Movies in the Park also, two movies in the park happening July and September. We will update those as they get closer. Other than that, we're, like you guys, we're opening up, we have a lot going on, and I'm just lucky to have a lot of great people helping me out now, so that's it.
Thank you, council, any questions? Sure.
Was that Cam Brightonbaugh?
Yes.
Awesome.
Oh, my gosh, seriously. She's the best, Mrs. Claus.
Good.
Yeah. Anybody else?
John?
Yeah, I just concur, Cam is great. She's been around for a while and she's been a tremendous asset to Parker. I mean, she worked at the chamber before and coming back and using the knowledge is just fantastic and a treasure to have.
And Laura?
Just Carrie, you have some wonderful board members on your staff, Tierney, Aldridge, and Bill Hall. I really enjoy meeting with them once a month and partnering with the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, that's awesome. And thanks for the recognition for Cam. I mean, she really is an amazing individual and the chamber many years ago, but just great, so thank you.
I walked in for a five-minute meeting with her on Monday and I came out with five action items.
I know. I love it.
She put me to work, so.
Yeah. She can do that so well.
She's still going to be Mrs. Claus?
Oh, yes. We have some great holiday events coming up. You guys just keep your eyes open, it's going to be fun. She brings the spirit.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Carol.
Next, from the Downtown Business Alliance. How are you going to introduce yourself tonight? So many choices.
Tonight, I will just introduce myself as Ann Barrington, and I'm vice chair of the Downtown Business Alliance. So thank you, Mayor, council, and staff, and we're just really excited to be part of this first meeting, first open meeting in over a year. So since the last Town Council presentation, we have been very busy. We held our special election Town Council Candidate Forum the first week of April, and we feel it really provided a lot of value to the people of Parker, and thank you for most of you that showed up for that, to support us. So we actually had three DBA members run in that election, and two of them won seats and were elected, but we'd like to thank all who ran, and I'm going to skip that part. I'm reading this from somebody else's, so, but we look forward to working with all of you to create the best downtown possible. We've updated the downtownparker.com website, where you'll find updated videos and easier navigation, and we continue to work on entertainment decks and planters, and we should actually have costs finally available for those by the end of this month. And in an effort to ensure we are benefiting from the lessons that have been learned from all other downtown, or many other downtowns in Colorado, we've had meetings with the Downtown Development Authorities of Castle Rock, Fort Collins, Loveland, and Longmont, and we're in the process of reaching out to the Cherry Creek North Business Improvement District so we can have a meeting with them as well. And we're learning a lot from these meetings, and we're really looking forward to incorporating these lessons to improve our own downtown Parker. We've implemented a new onboarding process for new Downtown Business Alliance members to ensure that they're realizing everything that we really have to offer for the members, and we're hoping this leads to a renewed focus on the events calendar and our beat newsletter. We held an Adopt a Street event last month that was widely attended, and we are really continually seeing improvement in the numbers of our Downtown Business Alliance members that are attending these functions. And lastly, we have submitted a community events permit for the 2021 Parker Car Fest to be held Saturday, June 12, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're going to have over 100 classic and exotic cars taking over Old Town Parker, and we're also working on a Jeep club to get some 4x4s in attendance. It is a free event to all attendees, and non-DBA booths, as well as those showing their cars will be paying a participation fee, and proceeds for that will be going to Parker Task Force and to the Downtown Business Alliance. And booths for all DBA members will be free. So thank you so much for letting me give an update. I know that was a lot. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, we'll start, Councilmember Hefta?
Oh, I'd just like to congratulate Ann. I'm so excited that you're going to be sitting up here, and I guess you'll be sitting probably next to me, so I'm excited to have you, maybe, maybe, right here.
I was wondering, I was wondering where I was.
So congratulations, Ann, on your election to Parker Town Council, and thanks for all you do for the Downtown Business Association.
Thank you.
Cheryl, anything, questions?
No.
Great, Doc, any questions?
Echo Councilmember Hefta's, congratulations, and also as a former DBA board member, I'm glad things haven't fallen apart since I left, so keep it.
You were the glue, holding it all together, so.
Thanks, Ann, appreciate it. All right, next up is public comment. Just as a reminder, public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak out on items not on the agenda. The council will not be taking any action, but you'll have your three minutes, and we will follow up on those items at a subsequent date. Just a reminder, you have three ways to participate now in public comment. One is to sign up here in council chambers, and when I call your name, come up to the podium, state your name, your address for the record, and then we'll give you three minutes to speak. You also can Zoom in, and we'll check with Danette in a moment to see if we have any folks on Zoom. Also, you can email the county, or the town clerk's office before 5 o'clock on the day of the meeting. We did receive one comment that will be included in the May 3 minutes for tonight. So with that, we are going to call our first speaker up, and then after, if you didn't sign up for any reason, then we're all out of practice, so you'll still get a chance to speak, you can come up after we get through the first list. So, Mr. Losi, you, oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had Kirk Losi from here in Parker. So Kirk, if you will give us your address.
I'm, I live at 11568 Terrorwood Court in Parker.
Okay, let me get my timer here, hang on just a second. Kind of out of practice on this here. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I came here two years ago to ask you guys to change the rule about chickens. They said they would talk about it, but nothing ever happened. The current rule says that my chickens have to be 200 feet away from my neighbor's house. Both of my neighbors' houses are about 10-ish feet away from my backyard. Most of the cities in Denver allow chickens, not roosters. I raised chickens in Arizona, and they were a wonderful thing for me. Here are some of the benefits that I found. They will eat anything, so we aren't throwing away as much stuff, so that's a benefit. They lay fresh eggs, and you can eat them. Well, you cook them first, but they don't poop very much, so that's another plus, and they don't bite very hard, so, yeah. They give responsibility to young adults and children, in my case, and they could help families save money on. help families save money on eggs. I eat quite a bit of eggs, so it helps. To conclude, chickens are a vital part of a healthy community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Loce, appreciate that. And just a note of privilege, very well done tonight, very well done. All right, next up, we have Neva Shearer from here in Parker. Ms. Shearer, if you will stand up and state your address for the record, and I'll reset the time.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My address is 12847 Capitol Creek Street here in Parker.
Great, go ahead, and I'll start the timer for you.
This is about construction traffic on Matzenbacher. There are, well, first, let me say, I live in Stro Ranch, Manzanita. We have Matzenbacher on the west side, Cherry Creek on the east, Bright View Landscaping on the north, and Ironstone Condos on the south along Stro Road. We're sort of an isolated little group of houses. There are two ways to get in and out. It's by using Kaiser Creek or French Creek. Both of them intersect with Matzenbacher. There's a stoplight at Kaiser Creek. French Creek only has a stop sign. There's a string of parents, usually when the school is open at Legacy Point Elementary, of parents delivering their kids to school and then coming back out to Matzenbacher, and a lot of them are trying to turn northbound on Matzenbacher. In front of my car, I have had two or three people pull out directly in the middle of traffic, hoping, I guess, that people will stop and let them in. I don't want to wreck my car, so I stopped, but I'm not sure that that's always going to happen every time. Just a side comment. My backyard is on Matzenbacher. The traffic noise from the large earth hauling semi trucks and dump trucks sounds like I'm standing on the shoulder of a major highway. It's hard to try to hold a conversation outside in my yard. The trucks start around 6:00 in the morning and continue until 6:00 PM or later at night. I hear noise from inside my house from the traffic all the time. If I wanted to be outside to relax or be with friends, it would not be enjoyable. When thinking about how long the situation might last, I get discouraged. There's house construction at Hessen Matzenbacher, at the west end of Stro Road, and south on both sides of Crowfoot down toward Castle Rock. I don't know the number of houses being built, but I've been told that there's around 5,000. How long, in months or years, the construction trucks are going to be traveling? I don't know. I would like to request, am I off or up?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I would like to request that traffic control, and I'm not sure that's the right name of a department, conduct an official vehicle counting, using whatever equipment and technology is available for that. I think it would be very useful in planning and decision-making.
Great, thank you, ma'am, appreciate your time.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. Next up is Jody Newton. If you'll come down and, yes, ma'am, if you'll come down to the. Oh, okay, great. Great. Is there anybody else in chambers wishing to make a public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Danette, do we have anybody online?
If you are online and would like to make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. No public comments.
Great, and with that, we will close out public comments, and we will turn to item number six, report items and comments from Mayor and Council. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last week during the study session, you and I attended, for a brief period, a Douglas County Youth Initiative Outstanding Youth Award Celebration, where various Douglas County students were recognized for their achievements, including Parker area students from Chaparral High School Lauren Ark, Ponderosa High School Samantha Flores Velasquez, and last but not least, Legend High School Mason Pennington. In addition, as it lays on to Parker Senior Center, they're hoping to do a soft opening in June, and then a grand reopening to their facility in August or September. And then finally, I attended the Arbor Day Celebration that the Parker Rec Department provided on Saturday, which was attended very well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
I had a meeting last week with staff from the Police Department to look at the pending legislative issues that will be affecting local law enforcement. And I don't have the results of that, they're evaluating that to see if they want to bring anything forward to council or not. That's all I have.
Councilmember Diack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of a busy couple weeks. As Mayor Lopez articulated, Dr. Cog is out there. I am the Parker Rep for Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments.
Not an M.D.?
Not an M.D., although I did say to Holiday Express at some point in time in the past. During our meeting on the 21st, we reviewed and adopted the Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan, and in government, this is all about acronyms, it's MVRTP. How that helps or affects Parker is it brings the Parker Road corridor onto the plan. That is a good thing, because you could potentially get some federal monies for that corridor. So that's the first step in a very long process to get anything put onto Parker Road from a road transportation financing vehicle. We also addressed the Transportation Improvement Program waiting list, or the TIP waiting list. How that affects Parker, we got an extra $250,000 for our Parker Road project, improvement project that was already approved, so that's good news. Let's see here, I had an E470 Finance Budget Audit Committee Work Session. We reviewed the audit results. Happy to say that the auditors of KPMG provide a clean report to the authority. We had a debt transaction briefing. We have to do a debt transaction because LIBOR, that is the London Interbank rate, that is going away, so we have to change to either a SOFR or a SIFMA type of backed variable bond rating. So that's going to potentially save about $700,000. We also talked about the revenue projections. Interesting note, from a long-term standpoint, going through this COVID experience, the consultants believe that this COVID work-from-home movement is potentially going to impact long-term traffic rates by 5% to 8%. So that was just something of interest. We are anxiously awaiting to discuss revenue projections. You know, that will depend upon traffic revenues or traffic continuing to come back to the system. It is the hope that we can talk about that and bring back potential toll rate reduction discussions here towards the end of this year. I also was a participant in the Town of Parker Investment Advisory Committee. We have two Parker residents who sit on that as well, who are industry or financial professionals. And they had no questions or comments. I was also a participant in the Dr. Cog Awards Ceremony. I was recognized as being past chair, so I got a plaque with a gavel on it and stuff like that, so I didn't bring that. Also sat in for Mayor Toborg to do the voter canvassing and certification, so the special election has been, I think, officially certified, according to the Town Clerk's Department. I just signed and dated, that's effectively it, and sat through, I think, a 10-minute presentation, so the mayor didn't miss much. And lastly, I, like Councilmember Hendricks, attended the Arbor Day Festival, and the highlight is always flipping flapjacks. Todd did not mention that, but that was awesome, in addition to seeing all these people around picking up seedlings, if you will. That is it, thank you.
And thank you for filling me, filling in on the canvassing. Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you, Mayor. I also had a busy week. I had the lovely opportunity to meet with Mr. Beau Martinez from Economic Development here, the Deputy Town Administrator, and had a great conversation, just learning more about economic development in the town. I also had a great meeting with Mr. John Fusa of Community Planning, and also appreciate the education and the update on many of the things that we've talked about in Town Council. It's always great to meet with the staff in the town to get a greater understanding of the issues that are before you. I also had the opportunity to attend a human trafficking meeting online, and the town's police office commander, Commander Chris Peters, was also on there of the Parker Police Department. And I'd also like to give another shout-out to the Police Department for implementing the human trafficking campaign in this town that's been going on for the last, oh, three or four months now. They've done a fantastic job of bringing awareness on this issue to the entire community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Hefta. Moving on to item number seven, the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of the consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items 7A, B, C, and D. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda for May 3.
Call second.
Great, it's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Please vote when indicated to do so. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. Item number eight is our first public hearing, and that is the Park Glen subdivision filing number three, Lot 1, Block 2, rezoned to C Commercial District. And Krista, you're handling that for us, welcome. And if for the, just so people can know your name and what you do for the town.
Hi, everyone, I'm Krista, I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. This rezoning would remove the Park Glen filing 3, Lot 1, Block 2, from the Park Glen PD and rezone it to C Commercial. The intent of this rezoning is to allow for the existing car wash to continue as a use despite the planned removal of the primary use on site, a gas station. The subject property for the use by special review application is generally located south of Park Glen Drive and west of Parker Road in the Park Glen Plan Development. A gas station and car wash currently occupy the site. A concurrent site plan amendment application has been submitted that proposes to remove the gas station and replace it with a coffee shop and drive-through. The Park Glen PD guide does not allow car washes as a use by right. With the removal of the former primary use of the gas station, it was determined that rezoning the site to straight commercial would be the optimal way to permit the car wash's continued operation. Above, you can see the zoning of the site and its surrounds, commercial and plan development. If we dive in further to the uses designated as permitted within each of these PD guides, you can see that the site is currently designated as commercial within the Park Glen PD, and all of the lots that surround the site are also designated as commercial, whether through straight zoning or within their respective PD guides. Rezoning the site from plan development to commercial would be a zoning designation consistent with its current and proposed use and compatible with the subject properties surrounding uses. The subject property is located within the central commercial character area of the Town of Parker's master plan. Central commercial is, quote, "the commercial core of the town. Growth should focus on core retail services, offices, lodging, restaurants, entertainment, and to a lesser extent, higher-density residential uses. Vertical mixed use is highly encouraged where appropriate." The uses proposed for this site fit both the zoning designation of commercial and the character area of central commercial, and would thus be consistent with the Parker 2035 master plan. After reviewing the applicant's responses to the nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning proposal, it is staff's view that the proposed use will not detrimentally impact the surrounding uses, and the rezoning is consistent with the Town of Parker's master plan. As the coffee shop building will be new construction, all of the requirements in the land development ordinance and the development design guidelines will also be met during the site plan process. These requirements will ensure that the new building is well-designed and will bring the overall site up to code. Staff has reviewed the proposal, and as outlined within the staff report, has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for a rezoning, and the public notice requirements have been met. Planning Commission reviewed the proposal on April 8th and unanimously recommended approval. Therefore, staff and Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the two ordinances that will rezone the subject property from Park Glen PD to commercial. Staff is available for any questions that council members may have, and the applicant is also available this evening for operational questions.
Great, thank you, Krista. And does the applicant have a presentation just for questions?
Yep.
Okay, so council, I will entertain questions to staff or the applicant on this topic. So we'll start to my left, Councilmember Hefta.
Just a few comments. I have reviewed the application in Parker's municipal code, Section 13.04.240F, 1 through 9, and that describes the nine criteria for approval of consideration of this request. I've reviewed all the documents in the packet, and it appears that it complies with the nine criteria for this request. I'd also like to state that no additional costs were incurred by the town, and the environmental impacts to the community were actually improved by this project. And so not only does it meet the criteria, it's actually a benefit in some way to the town. You know, there's a couple of car washes through the town, and I always think that probably another car wash is always a great idea, as well with a convenience store and a place to get some coffee as well. So I have no issues with this, is it meets the nine legal criteria for consideration of this request. Thank you.
Councilmember Diack?
I don't know if I can top that. Other than, you know, in the summertime, that car wash is busy, so putting a coffee shop there, I think they're going to clean up when it comes to coffee sales in the summertime.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
All right. Councilmember?
This is the opportunity for council to ask questions. I'm hearing a lot of deliberations, so I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any questions, Cheryl?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions, and this is primarily for the applicant. I was just wondering if you have a square footage of the convenience store area that you're trying to put in?
Jody, if you'll come down and introduce yourself, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Yeah, I'm Jody Newton with Masterworks LLC. I'm here on behalf of Wash &amp; Go of Colorado. It's a car wash brand that is currently has 10 sites in San Diego, and we're bringing it into Colorado, so it's a high-end express car wash. So the game plan is, there's existing Connaught Fuel Store and a C Station there, and it's definitely obsolete. It was built in 1996, and there's new gas stations coming in, and it's just not operating correctly. So our game plan is to team a BlackRock Coffee, they're corporate out of Portland, and they're coming into this market. There's a site in Castle Rock, one in Littleton, and the DTC. So this will be the first time that car wash and a drive-through coffee shop will be teamed together, but I think it'll be kind of a fun concept. So actually, the C Store, I don't know exact square footage of the building, but the coffee shop will be smaller than that in size. I believe it's about 2,400 square feet. It does have an indoor seating area, but most of the people, since this COVID situation, have learned how to use the drive-throughs. So their business has been very successful during this period at those other three stores, so that's how we foresee this to operate as well. So if you get in there and the car wash is busy, you can go to get coffee first or vice versa, so that's kind of the idea.
Great. Councilmember?
Does that answer your question?
Just another one. So are you envisioning this as a drive-your-own-car-through, or are we going to be getting out of the car, going, getting coffee, and your staff drives it through? of the car, going, getting coffee, and your staff drives it through?
No, so the car wash itself is an express car wash. You don't get out, so you drive through. The vacuums are free, so you can come back out and do your vacuuming. We have done a parking analysis, so we've got plenty of parking for the BlackRock Coffee Shop, for the interior seating area. We've got some outdoor seating area as well. And then the vacuum areas basically serve for the car wash parking. You can cross-pollinate if you want and walk across, but we assume basically that most people just come, vacuum their cars, and then drive back around again, or go over and park in their area. Our employees will be parked on the adjacent Park Glen subdivision, and they promote, you know, cross-parking, shared parking. So our neighbors are very safe, they've got more parking than they need, so they're going to allow us to do some employee parking over there if we need on busy weekends.
One more question, but I don't know if it goes to staff or to the applicant, and that is, will the existing fuel tanks be removed?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Let's say, well, we will. We've done a phase one and a phase two on the site, and currently there's no environmental issues. The tanks aren't leaking or anything like that, but they will be completely removed and meet all state standards.
I appreciate that.
So we clean up the site, too.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Hi. Will you be offering car detailing services still?
No, this will be self-service.
Okay.
We will have employees on site, so I guess if you had an issue, we could help you out or something, but...
And do you have a rough timeline when you think, how long construction would take?
Well, the car wash, we're going to repurpose the building. We're going to gut it all out, put new equipment, so it'll be totally upgraded, and the exterior will be upgraded as well to match the coffee shop. So it'll be a coherent architectural theme throughout. We should be able to build it fairly quick, so we hope to probably pull building permits a couple of months or so, or, you know, somewhere in there, and then hopefully do construction this year, and we should be open by next spring at the Laisse-ride. Krista?
Never make promises.
True.
Guesstimation.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anything else, Todd? All right. Thank you. So with that, we will go to the public hearing on this and open up the public hearing at 7:50 PM. If there's anyone in council chambers or on Zoom, council chambers, please make your way to the podium. If on Zoom, please raise your hand.
No comments on Zoom, Mayor?
Okay, no one in. And we'll close public comments at 7:50 and bring it back to the council. Todd, any further questions, comments?
No, I like Councilmember Hefta indicated that it meets the nine criteria and looks like a good project. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
No, I like the project.
Great. Excellent. Councilmember Diak?
No, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hefta? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance, let me reread these. I don't know if I did already. On ordinance number 3.38.3 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number 3.38 by the deletion of certain property, Park Glen subdivision filing number three, lot one, block two, from the planned development zoned area known as Park Glen, and on ordinance number 3.57, second reading, a bill for an ordinance rezoning certain property, Park Glen subdivision filing number three, lot one, block two, from Park Glen Plan Development to C Commercial District pursuant to the Parker Land Development Ordinance and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And Jim, do we need two separate motions on these?
Yeah, that's right.
That's correct, Mayor. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.38.3.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. It has been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when prompted. And that ordinance passes unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.357 on second reading.
I will make that motion as well.
All right. Councilmember Pogue?
Actually, I just want to clarify. Jim, do we need to read these into the record?
I thought he did that.
I did. Well, so what's going on is the mayor is making the motion, and you're essentially saying so moved.
Yeah.
I mean, my preference would be that you, for the record, as a council member, just make the motion. I move to approve ordinance number 3.357 on second reading.
I would do that, but he's already done it, so.
Okay.
Look, so usually the town clerk corrects me on that, so I get the eye from her, so...
Okay, I'll start over.
Chris, I don't know what we're going to do.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.357 on second reading.
A second.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when prompted to do so. And that passes unanimously. Item number nine, ordinances. Ordinance number nine dot three two eight on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas County concerning Lincoln Avenue, Jordan to Parker Road. And I think we have Director Williams and Mr. Ekstrom coming up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Is it on?
Yeah.
I think it's on.
There you go.
My name is Bob Ekstrom. I'm a project manager for the engineering department. The item before you tonight proposes to approve an IGA with Douglas County for the conceptual and preliminary design efforts for the Lincoln Avenue widening project. So a little background, Lincoln Avenue was widened to its current four-lane configuration in 1997. Based on traffic projections at that time, a six-lane, three lanes in each direction was anticipated in the future. Lincoln Avenue is an important component to the Parker's area long-term roadway transportation plan, and due to existing and projected traffic increases, the time has come for the widening to occur. Prelimarily, the project includes widening and or restriping sections of Lincoln Avenue between approximately Jordan Road and Parker Road, including widening four existing bridge structures and all incidental work to accommodate three lanes of travel in each direction. Scope may also include adding pedestrian bridges across Cherry Creek and Newland Gulch to maintain existing multi-use paths on north and south sides of Lincoln Avenue. So this is just a quick vicinity map showing the project limits between Jordan and Parker Road. The project will extend a little bit to the west between Jordan and Keystone Boulevard and Stone Gate. Next slide, please. So a little more background, Douglas County has agreed to jointly fund the project due to the regional significance of the roadway. The town and county are ready to move forward with the conceptual and preliminary design efforts. The town and county have appropriated 2021 budget at a quarter million dollars per entity, a half, or 500,000 total, to fund this conceptual preliminary design effort anticipated to run into the fourth quarter of 2022. The town and county have agreed to utilize the county's on-call engineering listing to select up to six engineering firms to submit statements of qualifications. The six firms will be ranked, and the top two will be interviewed and asked to submit competitive proposals. It is the goal of the selection committee to select the most qualified and competitive firm. Goals of the effort are to conduct operational studies of the roadway, data collection including survey, geotechnical, and SUE, explore and develop design options, identify preliminary right-of-way, easement, and environmental impacts, utility coordination, advance the selected design option to 30%, and develop opinions of probable costs. Anticipated future IGA amendments to finalize the design, and construction is anticipated for 2024, and an additional IGA anticipated for that effort. So an ordinance is required to approve this IGA, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Great, council? I'll start to my right. Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Questions?
Councilmember Diak?
No questions, just a comment. You know, it's fantastic to have support at the county level for these regional projects. One note I didn't articulate in my council notes was that part of the Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan was the subsequent connections, the Keystone-Oswego and the I-25 interchange on Lincoln. And, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to set up the ability for us to acquire additional money to complete that corridor to hopefully make it a little easier for our citizens to get to I-25. So, I mean, with that, and again, obviously, the acceptance of working with the Town of Parker from a county perspective is it's pending commissioner approval. So they are continuing to work with us, but that large chunk of construction money will need to get approved by the commissioners. Their half of this comes tomorrow, from what I understand, at their business meeting. And again, great support to have, and appreciate your efforts, Bob. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta? Any questions?
Can I make a comment?
We'll bring you back for comments at the end.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're going to open up the public hearing, public comment of this at If anybody in council chambers or on Zoom has a public comment, Danette, anyone on Zoom?
If you have a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. There are no comments.
Great, and seeing none in council chambers, we'll close the public comment of this section, and I will bring you back to the council. Councilmember Hefta, I think you have a comment.
Thank you.
All right.
So these agreements frequently involve different towns, the county. These are strategic agreements, and they're quite complex, actually. So I would just like to recognize that these agreements take time, expertise, planning, and negotiation from all the partners involved, and there's a lot of negotiation that I would imagine takes place in all this. So a special thanks to Bob Ekstrom and Tom Williams on this matter for their expertise from the engineering department.
Great, thank you.
I have to give credit to Chris Hudson. He's not here, but he worked on this for a long time, so just picking up where he left off.
Thank you for that input.
Thanks, Bob, for that.
Thank him as well.
Councilmember Diak, any?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, Chris is a large part of this, but again, I think we work as a team, and if somebody's not here, somebody else is more than willing to pick it up, so we appreciate that. And again, you know, thanks to staff and county staff and the commissioners for their support to continue to further the transportation connections we have here in Douglas County and the Town of Parker.
Great. Councilmember Pogue, any comments?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this expansion for levels of service. I'm not looking forward to the traffic jams due to construction.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I think we're all excited for improvement in infrastructure, and I echo the thanks to all the town staff and everyone involved, and including Councilmember Diak for being in Dr. Todd.
Absolutely, absolutely. With that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance number nine dot three two eight on second reading.
Great.
Second?
Second.
And I heard Councilmember Hendricks moves, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Please vote when prompted. And that ordinance passes unanimously. Item number 10, resolution, resolution number 21 dash 022, a resolution to amend resolution number 19 dash 023, series of 2019, to allow, subject to the satisfaction of certain conditions, a partial waiver to defer compliance with certain requirements of sections 13 dash 07 dot 060 and 13 dot 07 dot 060 and 13 dot 070 dot 070 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance as amended, associated with the processing of the sketch and preliminary plan for certain segments of the Rio property, commonly known as Anthology North property, until those segments are ready for development. Mr. Fusa, please.
That was a mouthful, Mayor.
It has to be a Chris Elliott project if it's that long, right?
Thank you very much. My name's John Fusa, the Community Development Director for the town. I'm here for the department and Brianna Simon, our associate planner, who generally handles this project, but wanted to give her a night off. She is watching and listening online in case I get stuck on an issue or a question, and she can rescue me if that happens, hopefully. That's the theory at least. Danette, if you would just toggle forward to the first slide. So we have here a vicinity map. Most of you and the public are familiar with this site, but the Anthology North Plan Development is one of the two largest remaining plan developments in the community in the southwest quadrant of town. By notation on the map in front of you, Anthology North is the large area, about 1,200 acres, immediately north of the blue line, running east-west or side-to-side through the vicinity map that generally depicts future Stro Road extended. It is located due east of Ruder Hess Reservoir, due south and fronting Hess Road, due west of Matzenbacher Road, and then north of the Hess Ranch Plan Development. So this is the last major growth quadrant in the town. Okay, Danette, thank you very much. Mind reader. The original resolution, 19 dash 023, was approved by the Town Council on April 15th, 2019, for this project. That resolution allowed the owner and developer, their development partner, to segment or sequence the development of this very large tract or property into three segments, one, two, and three. It allowed them to initiate and proceed with segment one, which they're doing, while deferring the submittal of applications for future segments two and three, and then deferring the submittal of those applications, also deferring compliance with the town subdivision regulations until such time as those applications were submitted. So just a deferral in time, no waiver of any requirements. And the applicant has proceeded on that basis. We are now working with them at the staff level on segment one. They are seeking to further sequence segment one into three further segments, segments 1A, 1B, and 1C. We think at the staff level this makes sense. 1A, that would allow them to proceed north to south, so from Hess Road, where there is some infrastructure, south into the site where they have to plan, design, and build infrastructure. So this amended resolution would allow them to further sequence and segment, segment one only, into three coordinated segments, all with coordinated planning and design, and ultimately, construction. In return for that, we, the town and the staff have worked with the applicant for a couple cleanup items. One would be that, one of the other revisions would be to require that the overall parks master plan for Anthology North be required to be reviewed and updated with each segment as they proceed through the development to make sure it's current. It reflects any planning and design changes, any proposals the developer may make, or any request the town may make. And so we think that's a good idea to keep that important guiding document current. It also would revise the timing of school site dedication to follow the segmentation or sequencing of the project. We think that makes sense. Those school sites only get created when the town approves the sketch and preliminary plans, and ultimately, the final plan or plat, which is then used to create a legal lot of record. So no dedication without final plat approval and a legal lot of record. And so staff believes it's important that the school site dedication follow the sequencing of the project. And there are three school sites here. In segment 1B, there's an elementary school site, so this would enable, by this revision or amendment, we would be able to work with the developer on creating the legal lot of record for the elementary school site in segment 1B. That would then get created. The town would likely hold that site in trust until the school district calls it. Same principle goes for segments two and three. In segment two, there's a large high school, middle school site. Segment three, there's another elementary school site. Some other cleanup items, there's some clarifying language in terms of which planning areas in this very large plan development fall within each segment, segments one, two, and three, and then further segments 1A, 1B, 1C, just for clarity. It also provides, again, to protect the town, that if council, should you approve this, and staff is recommending approval, that final plat approval for segment one, which would create legal lots of record, cannot be issued by staff or obtained by the developer until segments 1B and 1C receive preliminary plan approval. That way, it's all coordinated and synced up, and we think that makes sense. Then finally, there's a replacement exhibit two, which simply updates the development plan that relates to this resolution. You'll recall that the developer proposed and received Town Council approval for an amended development guidance. amended development guide and plan in November 2020. So that's simply bringing those related documents current. Okay, up on the map, again, in terms of just segmentation, you'll see the map, the areas that are colored, segments 1 divided into 1A, 1B, 1C, are depicted in powder blue, purple, and an orangey, brownie, tan color. My eyesight's not all that great. So that constitutes Segment 1 divided into three parts. Segment 2 at the top would be the next segment, and that's mostly commercial and mixed use, but it does have the large high school, middle school site in it. Segment 3 is in green, which would be the balance of the site, west of Chambers Road, all the way to the western boundary with Ruder Hess Reservoir. So that's how it would play out with this further segmentation. And Donette, if you would toggle forward, a couple comments. Staff finds that the amended resolution is generally consistent with the original resolution approved by council April 15, 2019, with the changes as noted and as shown in your packet. Sequencing or phasing of development is common, provides for orderly planning, design, and construction, including of infrastructure. And this also provides an opportunity, this amended resolution, for staff in the town to clarify that school dedication should follow the segmentation or sequencing, and requires the parks plan to be kept current by the applicant and developer. Staff recommends approval, and you have the recommended motion if you agree. I'm happy to take questions or comments.
Great, and Director Fusa, does the applicant have a presentation, or is the applicant just here for?
He does not. He's here to listen in and to take any questions or comments, should you have them.
Excellent. Council, I will entertain any questions. Emphasis on question, I'll start with you, Laura.
Okay. Thanks. Just to get a general idea, just because we are talking about one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school, what is the overall number of houses that will be in that Anthology North development, anticipated number of new residents from that?
So Anthology North in its entirety is 1,208 acres gross. It is approved by prior town zoning approval for 3,305 new housing units. And again, I'm going to do a little bit of planner math. By 2010 census, our average household size was 2.86 persons per household. I have to round that up, so 3,300 housing units by three people, that's about 9,900 residents, based on 2010 census data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak, any questions?
No, sir.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes. Director Fusa, in 2019, you didn't want to do this. You wanted not to do all these subsegments because of consistency, pressure on staff. What's changed?
So I would disagree. In 2019, Councilmember Poe, staff was supportive of the segmentation of Anthology North into multiple phases or segments. We thought, in community development, and I thought at that time, that it made sense because it's a large site, 1,200 acres plus, very large to kind of master plan, design, and construct all in one chunk. So the typical response, and we think an appropriate response both then and now, is to phase or sequence it. The developer at that time proposed three segments. Staff was supportive, I was supportive. They're now back proposing some further sequencing, just for orderly planning, design, and construction, including of infrastructure, for Segment 1. We think it makes sense. We've always been supportive of phasing and segmentation, particularly for these large plan developments. We think it provides for a more rational, orderly, and coordinated development process.
But there was discussion on not wanting to do all the subdividing, the subsections. You've got your sections, now we're coming in for subsections, and I believe that was the discussion back then, whether we wanted to do that or not. And when we approved this back then in 2019, these subsegments were not there.
No, correct. They were not there. They were not proposed at that time by the ownership and their development partner.
Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. The original partial waiver that was approved in 2019 called out subsegments 1A, 1B, and 1C. What the 2019 resolution required is that those subsegments could be approved by separate final plats, but only one sketch and preliminary plan for all of Segment 1. What the proposal before you does tonight, it allows them to advance the preliminary plan separately for 1A, and I think is a second preliminary plan for 1B and 1C. So that's the ask tonight. But they can't get a final plat approved for Segment 1A until the preliminary plan for 1A and then B and C is approved, which will require notice and public hearing before this town council.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, I knew there was a change here. When we talked segmenting, they were going to divide up in segments, but then I was seeing this as further segmentation. I guess I am seeing further segmentation, but...
Well, these segments did exist in 2019, it's just a question of timing on the sketch and preliminary. Before, it was going to be one sketch and preliminary for all of Segment 1. Now they get to bring forward two preliminary plans for Segment 1A and a separate preliminary plan for B and C. And I think you've already approved A, and we have not done...
No, A is still under review. So what we have, though, is we have planning and design for all of Segment 1 from the applicant, coordinated, reviewed, and Town Attorney Maloney's correct, they're simply looking to have the ability to proceed with Segment 1A first to preliminary plan approval while still processing segments 1B and 1C. So the town has planning and design for all of Segment 1. You at the council will see all of Segment, you'll see the entirety of the design, but if you approve the resolution, you'll see 1A first for a public hearing on the sketch and preliminary plan related to Segment 1A. Assuming approval, and that's an assumption, that'll be your decision, they will then proceed, and you will see a public hearing, the sketch and preliminary plans for segments 1B and 1C, which they would bundle together. And assuming approval of all three, you'll have the entirety of the planning and design in the project for Segment 1. They're simply looking to break it up into more manageable chunks or parts, which, from the community development staff perspective, we think continues to make sense.
Okay, final question. I understand why the developer wants to do it, but I thought also a part of this process was to reduce the staff workload. Does this actually do that?
So the, what I would say, I wish, I wish it were true that any of this reduced the staff workload, but the reality is, Councilmember Poe, is none of this does. Whether they pursued it all in, let's say, one chunk, or one proposal for Segment 1, or even the entirety without any segmentation, the work is still the work. There still has to be review of all the submittals. My department with Engineering and Public Works can do the heavy lift on the town staff review with input from Parks and Recreation. It all has to be done, so this doesn't, the segmentation doesn't reduce the workload kind of overall in the end. The benefit it does give us, though, is because they're breaking down a very large plan development site into several phases or segments, they get to sequence and time it out, and that enables the town staff to work with the applicant on a limited area within the overall plan development. So while that review is very intense, and I can tell you, my staff would attest to that, it really just allows the benefit of, I think, a more orderly and rational review process. And so to the degree that, you know, small benefit that that does help staff in terms of breaking this down into more manageable chunks administratively, but overall, the work isn't reduced, it's just sequenced out over time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I just wrote down manageable chunks, so. But effectively, this resolution, if amended, would help improve the speed and efficiency of this project and the infrastructure in this area, correct?
So I don't mean to be argumentative. I would not say that it would reduce the speed and efficiency. What it would allow for is a more rational, orderly development submittal process, and the developer to sequence, I think, in a more rational and orderly basis related to the market, their overall sequencing of the project, and for the town through staff to work with them through that process and towards the end.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add, from the simple city attorney's perspective, the reason we wanted to at least have the partial waiver, and it's consistent with what John is telling you, so that we have a roadmap on how this project was going to develop, and it created a lot of predictability for us at our level on how this project was going to move through the pipeline and ultimately be developed.
Excellent. All right, any other questions? Okay, we will open it for public comment at 8:18. Anyone in council chambers or on Zoom? We'll start queuing them up on Zoom. Sir, come down, and we'll get you set here.
My name is Michael Kovna, live at 12793 Red Rose Circle. Just comment on this resolution. I'd like to make the suggestion that community development take into consideration the speed limits on the feeder streets. Kaiser Creek, French Creek are set at 35. During the hour, school hours, drop-off, pickup, morning and afternoon, vehicles are quite consistently in excess of 45, even 55 miles an hour on those roads. I know some of those roads are going to be extended into this Anthology North division, and I would suggest that, you know, as you guys plan, develop, you know, take that into consideration, that that's a residential neighborhood as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to make comments? Donette, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll close public comments at 8:19 and bring you back to the council. Todd, any further comments?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
John?
Yeah, no, I mean, just to follow up, John, where would the, or how do we, this is more a Tom Williams question, but how do we identify speed limits? It seems like this is a little bit premature to talk about speed limits on residential streets, but, I mean, how does that fit into this resolution?
I don't know. I'm happy, Tom, I see Tom coming up, but I, our Engineering Public Works staff, including our director who's walking up, review that during the planning and design process, and he can speak to that.
So yeah, the subdivision layout, the roadway network, and the types and classifications of those roads are evaluated as part of the preliminary plan process, and we do have criteria and standards as it relates to the design of those roadways, to make sure that they are, can accommodate vehicles at the anticipated posted speeds for collector roadways and local roadways. So all that criteria is available to the engineers, the developers, at the time they do preliminary plan, and our staff reviews those for compliance and conformance during that referral process.
So it's more objective, not subjective?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta, any comments?
Yes. I would like to state that I think we will be having an update on this area from Tom in the future. Just...
Yes, ma'am, we are going to be talking with town council in two weeks about the transportation network in the area, and some ideas and options that council may want to consider as it relates to traffic volumes.
Thank you, Tom. And I would like to address the two folks that were here tonight and that came for public comment, as well as make a comment. And I sympathize with your situation, because I have a child that I take to the elementary school there, and I am very aware of the noise, traffic, and congestion along those roadways. And also, as the gentleman said, the individuals that are speeding frequently down the road that comes out, I think that's, is it Matzenbacher, right there, by the school as well. So I sympathize greatly with your situation, because it is very difficult right now for folks going to and from the school and traveling that roadway. And hopefully, Mr. Tom Williams will be providing some input on this matter in a couple weeks to address this situation. Again, this is a planned development. To that end, the developers have bought this land, they have complied with all the requirements of the town to actually build this development. And what we're addressing here tonight is the fact that this request actually doesn't change the plan development anyway, it just breaks those segments into manageable subareas to be processed as 1A, 1B, and 1C. And from also having gone through my own, buying a house in Horseshoe Ridge years ago, I understand the need for having to sequence the development. It's a huge development, it takes many years to build out, and unfortunately, the noise, the traffic, the congestion will all have to be issues that we will have to resolve as we go on this matter, because again, as we stated tonight, there's going to be almost 10,000 residents in those homes and over, what, 1,200 acres of land, right, Mr. Fusa? So I want to sympathize with the residents in this area, and hopefully, Mr. Williams can have some ideas for us in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
I think so. Any other questions, comments? Council, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 21-022.
I second. Moved by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when prompted.
Oh, sorry. Are you getting a vote? Okay. Hold on. Okay. Yes?
And that resolution passes unanimously. With no other business, for the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:24.
I move that we adjourn?
There a second?
I'll second.
Y'all just want to stay here for the name? Moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Poe. Please vote when prompted. Thank you.